Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by Mayor. And the one item I have this evening is a proclamation in support of Lake Forest Day to be held on August 2nd and 3rd. And I'd like to read the proclamation for the record and present it as well. Proclamation reads, "Whereas, the McKindlock Post 264, the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of the Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2011, with a view to bringing together the people of our city in the furtherance of civic interest and advancement of community fellowship. And whereas, the McKindlock Post 264, the American Legion honors the Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by adopting the theme, Lake Forest American Legion salutes time to celebrate. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair in pursuance thereof, and Tuesday, August 2nd, 2011, and Wednesday, August 3rd, 2011, shall be observed as a holiday in the City of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in their West Park in a spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city." So there, tell your employers right now, it's a city holiday and you have those days off. I don't know if that floats as well.
You're right, good luck.
Unless you're a city employee.
But be here on August 2nd and August 3rd, and I understand that Bill Malick is here from the American Legion, I'd like to present this to you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Appreciate great success.
We appreciate the note about having everybody in the 1861 fashion. We want to get that out to as many people as we can.
Hey, Bill, was just talking into the microphone, so the people that won't can hear you.
Unaccustomed as I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Kylie. The Lake Forest American Legion will be presenting its 90th Lake Forest Day this August, but it's far overshadowed by our coupling with the City of Lake Forest to celebrate its 150th anniversary. We're preparing the bands, and we have more bands this year than we have had in the past just because of this. People were excited about coming. So we thank you very much, and again, I appreciate your mentioning the fact that we want to see an 1861 theme for the parade. That's very important, we're telling all of our applicants to do so. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we wish you great success. We know you will.
One more thing.
Yes?
I don't think it would be possible for us to have a Lake Forest Day if it were not for the cooperation of the City of Lake Forest. Everybody we deal with there for years has been absolutely, positively helpful, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to let you know, just in remembrance of the 1861 theme, Alderman Novit just told me he's going to start growing his beard now.
Thank you again.
The only problem is my suit is for me.
It was over, I'm picking 65.
I'm in Garib right now.
Thank you so much. We tried to get some battle reenactment teams in, but to no avail, nobody wants to show up. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Let's conclude my cabinet this evening. The next item on the agenda is comments by City Manager, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Actually, I thought you were all going to dress up as your favorite mayor on the wall behind you for the parade, but...
Can we just carry their pictures?
Yeah, you can carry their pictures, that's right. Before we get to our two special guests that we have on the agenda, I have three very quick announcements. First, I would like to thank Senator Susan Garrett, Representative Karen May, and Representative Carol Cinty, who did work on our behalf to make sure that the Illinois Legislature did not cut the local government distributive fund to the City of Lake Forest. It could have been devastating for us, in addition to all the other cuts we've made in our budget, so we really want to thank them, and we'll be sending them a letter as well, thanking them for their assistance in carrying our message to the governor and leadership in Springfield. Secondly, I wanted to announce that this past weekend, on Saturday, June 2nd, one of our vehicles was out of town, but for a very special reason. We have an individual who was coming back from Afghanistan, and we used our truck 216 to take Lance Corporal Patrick O'Leary from the Marine Corps to a place. Patrick's family lives here in Lake Forest, and we were very fortunate, and I know a number of our employees who are ex-Marines were able to participate and to show their thanks on behalf of all the residents of the City of Lake Forest for all that he's done for his country. So, thought that was very nice, and I think there's been more about it in Patch and some of the other local newspapers about his coming home, and I know his family's very happy and thrilled that he is back home safe and sound. And then finally, Susan will put it up, going back to the 150th discussion, that we're really encouraging residents to plant their family tree for a $400 tax deductible donation. They can plant a tree somewhere in town. If anybody is interested in this, they can contact Peter Gordon, the City Forester, and workout arrangements. I know a number of people have already contacted and made a donation to this program. You may have seen driving around town that the 150 trees that were identified as one of the components of the 150th celebration have been planted. They look, you know, wonderful around town. It's amazing, when you're a tree city, you figure there's not another place to plant a tree, and then you find that there's many locations in town that can use it, particularly with the Emerald Ash Bore taking away so many of our trees along with Dutch Elm. But, I don't know, Susan, if there's anything else you wanted to mention about this Plant Your Family Tree program on behalf of the 150th?
Thank you, Bob. I would just like to encourage all residents to take part in this program. One of the ways that we're going to be acknowledging the donations is having an interactive map on the 150th website, so you'll be able to check it out and see where all the new trees are planted. But we figured it was a very nice way to acknowledge our celebration and a long-lasting legacy for families, so, thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of long-lasting legacies, we have this evening with us the Executive Director of Ragdale, who's here to tell us about exciting things that are going on in Ragdale, and I know there was a really nice article in the Lake Forester about the renovation project of the main house, but Susan Tillot is here to tell us more. Susan?
Thank you, Bob. You can tell we've been working together for a dozen years. Mayor Cowie, Alderman, staff, and guests, my name's Susan Tillot. I'm the Executive Director of Ragdale, the artist community that is operated by the Ragdale Foundation, on the city's property at 1230 and 1260 North Green Bay Road. While we don't have the final results in yet, I want to reassure you that our 2011 audit shows a very successful annual fund. We closed solidly in the black on the operating side, as well as generating more than a million new dollars for the capital campaigns. Even though the Ragdale House is closed, we're still hosting a mix of eight writers, visual artists, and composers, and continuing our public events like the High School Writing Intensive and Novel Affair. But this year I wanted to use my 10 minutes to talk about Operation Renovation, $3 million restoration of Howard Van Dorenshaw's summer home, which is the main building on the Ragdale On March 20th, we hosted a very festive kickoff to the celebration. Donors, residents, our architect, and our general contractor, joint board members, and Bob Kylie, to break a few ceremonial tiles. Bob was a really good sport and wore a kid's hard hat that day because we ran out of the big kind.
And I don't want to see this picture.
I think you're the only one who looks like you could build anything in that picture.
Let's make sure the viewers at home are getting a good look at that.
It's kind of like Habitat for Humanity in his off-hours. The guests were invited to inscribe good wishes on the walls of the Ragdale House in pencil on plaster, which I think will amaze those who do the next renovation in about 200 years, as we have been amazed to find handwritten notes in pencil on plaster by Howard Van Dorenshaw underneath all that wallpaper. I took this picture today, and you can see, we're really, truly in the thick of things over there. You've probably driven down Green Bay Road and seen the scaffolding and the banner. This is also a today shot. The initial demolition stage of the project revealed a few more problems with the foundation and the structural support of the 1906 edition than our pre-construction explorations had revealed. Unfortunately, this is fairly common in restoration, but we still plan to open to residents by summer of 2012. I know that in addition to your interest in our physical progress, you have a vested interest in our financial progress. As you'll remember, you or your predecessors voted to lend Ragdale $2 million so that we could move forward with the construction while we were still conducting fundraising. And as this slide shows, we did borrow $2 million. There's Bob Kylie's signature. And we start paying interest this month. And I want to reassure you that it's a very safe loan. I took this photograph in the 30 minutes that I had the check in my hot little hand between the municipal center and the bank. The loan is entirely secured, 100% secured, by $2 million of the Ragdale endowment, and fundraising's going very well. To date, we've raised $1,715,224, so we're well over the halfway mark, and right on or a little ahead of schedule. Our progress has been greatly aided by our friend and neighbor, John Bryan, who suggested that we form Ragdale's 21st Century Circle of Angels Club for donors of $100,000 or more. You know, this is the man who did this with Million, the Million Dollar Club at Millennium Park, and he helped us kind of downsize that for Ragdale. The model's been very successful. We now have 11 angels, and their names will be carved in a limestone collar that will go around what's called the Pearlink Fountain to the south of the Ragdale House. This is a fountain that Howard Van Dorenshaw designed. His wife Frances wrote the poem that adorns it, and it's been a favorite gathering place for Shaw family and residents for generations. However, I want to be clear that you don't have to be a $100,000 donor to participate in this campaign. Now that we've reached the 50% mark, we're launching the public phase. We're just beginning to contact the alumni, everyone who's ever been in residence at Ragdale, and the alumni are starting out with a good, strong showing. And also, community members who love the property, who support the arts, who have met a Ragdale artist, or have seen the creative process at work. I'd like to invite all of you to one of our monthly hard hat tours and dinner with the residents. These have been very successful, and if that doesn't work, we'll have a special one for city council members. You can have your own evening at Ragdale, and we'll show you what your property looks like when it's fully in progress. I think this is a great story for the city's 150th anniversary. Ragdale's raising $3 million in private funds to restore one of the city's most important buildings. It's the home of the architect who brought you Market Square, several of the most prominent houses in town, as well as familiar college, church, and civic buildings around town. So I'm going to stop there. I'm happy to answer questions on any of Ragdale's operations, but I thought a little focus would be good tonight since we've got something big going on.
I think, Susan, what we'll do is we'll set up a time to bring the council out so that we can give them a tour and make sure that they can all wear one of those silly plastic hats that I wore.
Yeah, I think that's only fair, Bob.
That's okay.
Make sure we get a picture with you, Bob.
Yeah, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations just on the success of the fundraising again in what's a challenging time, and it's a great facility. I'm sure all the council members have been out there, but especially this in here, it's just beautiful, and just success in the renovation.
Thank you. It's always a challenging time when Ragdale's out raising money. Last time was 2001, this time we started in 2008. But the House needs the work, and the House is really a gem, so, slow and steady wins the race, and we look forward to having all the new council members out to Ragdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And our second guest this evening is another Susan, our County Board Representative Susan Gravenhorst, who's here to give us an update of things that are going on at the county
Thank you very much, Bob. Good evening to the council members and Mayor Cowie. I've, oh, thank you, Susan. At your places, you'll find our latest Horizons magazine, which comes out quarterly. We have received national awards on this, and we're very proud of it, and it has a complete calendar inside, in the middle part of the magazine, of what's going on in the county during the months of June, July, and August. So I think you'll find some interesting things, even a full moon hike on the evening of August 21st, rather, August 12th, so you might keep that in mind. I want to tell you first about our changes in personnel. We have a new chairman of the county board, David Stolman, who lives in Buffalo Grove, and we have a new president of the Forest Preserve Board, Ann Mayne, who lives in River Woods, and also, we have a new member who is replacing Susie Schmidt, who was our former chairman and was elected to office in the state legislature. So he is going to take that place and lives in Antioch, and he represents District 20. He is associated with the newspaper in Waukegan. So that represents a new and exciting difference in our board. The first thing I want to talk to you about is the report of the Fort Sheridan Advisory Committee. This is not a formal report that I'm giving you, I'm just telling you something about what's been happening and what we are surprising will be happening in the near future. We have a very important meeting coming up a week from tomorrow on the 14th, which is our June, our board meeting, and at that time, we will vote on what we feel will be the best approach to the solution, to the advisory situation. You know, we've been talking about Fort Sheridan property for seven years. It's hard to believe time goes quickly when you're having fun. And we've covered it very thoroughly, I think. We've discussed it a great deal. We've had several open meetings, open to the public, that I think have been very successful, and we set in much of our discussion on three possibilities, which were an open space arrangement, Plan B, which was an arrangement of combining a golf course and open space, and the third item, which was an 18-hole golf course. Those are the things that we've been discussing, mulling over, bringing in experts to discuss these items with us, people who are experienced in golf promotion. So at this point now, we're going to be voting next Tuesday, and incidentally, our meeting is at nine o'clock in the morning, and you are most cordially invited, but the main meeting with, which this is discussed, will be the Forest Preserve Board District meeting, which will be immediately following the county board meeting, which takes place 30 minutes after the county board meeting ends. So that's probably about 11:00 or so. Anyway, we'd love for you to come and listen in and see what's going on. But to finish discussing this, there was a meeting this afternoon of various members of committees to discuss this and be ready for the vote on next Tuesday, and what we're thinking that we're going to do now is, we're going to have a vote on the issue of arranging for a group to come in who will privatize the operation of the whole situation, and who will suggest to us what would be the best sources of action on this issue, what would be our best approach considering the situation in golf in this country at this time, and that will be what we're going to take up first. We're not going to go into the other three items at this point. We're going to discuss having privatization and see if that would be our best approach in the whole situation. So that's what's going to be taking place next Tuesday, and we're hoping it'll be the best solution to the problem. We're having a very vested interest here in Lake Forest, having our own golf course, as does Lake Bluff, so that's going to be a very important aspect of this as well.
Do you, are you aware that we've kind of had resolutions opposed to that?
Yes.
Just so you know our position?
Yes, I know your position well.
Okay, good.
And I've discussed it.
And you're going to vote against it?
I feel strongly that way.
Okay, great.
But I don't think I'm voting against it, really. I'm voting for the privatization, because we're not going to vote for the options. That's what I was trying to make clear. We decided not to pursue that aspect and to vote on privatization, so, that's what I'll be voting.
Sounds like a vote for it.
Pardon me?
Sounds like a vote for it.
For what?
For the golf course.
Well, it is to some extent, but we have to figure out what we want to do with the rest of the property. And if the vote next Tuesday is no, then we have to go back and discuss it with the Army again. So this seems to be sometimes kind of a never-ending situation, but I think a vote against privatization, you're probably right, would be more a vote against the golf course. So anyway, if you have any thoughts, give me a call, please. I appreciate knowing how you feel. I've talked with Bob about it, and I've talked with Mayor Cowie about it, and we'll see if this is the best solution. It's a terribly difficult issue to deal with, and not so much that it took so much time, but that it just, there were so many aspects to it, and of course, the people who live at Fort Sheridan took part in our discussions as well, rightly so.
Susan, is the discussion on privatization, all the courses in the Forest Preserve District, or is it just the Fort Sheridan?
Fort Sheridan.
Just Fort Sheridan?
Yes.
So they won't privatize Thunderhawk or Country Star?
Not to my knowledge. No, I think it's just Fort Sheridan. We're trying to get this completed.
That's one of the questions in the documents that is a policy issue for the county board. So should we do them all, or one of them?
Susan, as you know, Bob, Kylie, and I both attended many of the meetings that were held locally.
Yes, I know you did.
With you as well. And as Alderman Morse just alluded to, there was a resolution passed here in March of 2009 by former Mayor Michael Rumel, which pretty much outlines our position at that time, which really hasn't changed. So, we would just, again, for your edification, just simply reaffirm that resolution again, and our main concern has always been not so much as to exactly, you know, what is developed there, but certainly from the standpoint of Highland Park and Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, that another golf course could simply cannibalize the rounds that are already at the three existing, or it's more than three, three or four to five courses, and certainly, our position is we don't want to see that happen. We're hoping that some type of solution will be worked out where, you know, that wouldn't hurt everybody, but obviously, the county board has to weigh in on that and struggles with that as well. But just so you understand our position, as we have, we've been pretty clear about from day one.
I know you have. And I'm so disappointed that it's gone on for so long. I mean, a seven-year discussion on something is really unfortunate, in my way of thinking. It seems we should have been able to come up to some decision sooner than this, but we haven't, so, we're still working on it. I think our committee has been very loyal and very dedicated to attending the meetings and trying to do our best, so, as I say, I hope you'll come to our meeting on Tuesday if you can, and call me if you have any thoughts to impart on this. It's a very big...
Would it help, Jim, if we reaffirmed our position? Would that be helpful for you in the meeting?
If you wish to do that, that would be fine.
I mean, if the council wishes, we can do that again this evening, so, I'm sure we could put that on in other business at the end of the council meeting, if you wish.
Or even now, all of us.
Even now, if you wish.
It is in the packet, I believe.
Is this going to be a document that you're going to give me to take with me, or something you're going to send to me?
Well, I think we have, I don't see any reason to really reword the resolution that was written in 2009, that's my opinion, but I think we could simply reaffirm that resolution. And Vic, if you give us directions as to how we do that, we can take a vote.
To reaffirm the resolution.
Okay.
I mean, we've certainly, the mayor and city manager have been participating, and we've been happy to hear all the comments, and all the comments that have been made haven't changed our opinion. So...
I'd entertain that motion if you wish to...
I understand.
I can entertain that motion if someone wishes to bring it up.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the resolution passed in 2009 relative to the Fort Sheridan property. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So again, you'll have our reaffirmation of our 2009 position as well.
And I'll carry your thoughts with me.
Susan, I will follow up with a letter to you, including the resolution and the action taken here by the council.
All right. That's very good. I have just a few other things to tell you about. It's been so long, the last time I was here was just before the big winter, so I have a few things that have happened. I don't know if you've seen our new Lake County permitting facility, which is behind Winchester House off Milwaukee Avenue, and that's something quite new for us in that we're providing convenience for people who are planning to build or to do any kind of work in that respect. They can come in and give their application for building, anything from a house to a development, and then instead of having to go all around the whole building, as what they do at the courthouse, trying to see different areas, trying to make plans, and get their approval, they just sit in one office and everyone comes to them from around the building. And it's a wonderful way to do business, and it's not too much used yet, we're kind of at the forefront of that, so we're making a big success of that, and it's a lovely building. We built it and paid cash for most of it, so, which, I would also remind you that we still have our excellent AAA bond rating. We're very proud of that. When I hear on, excuse me, TV that some important groups have lost theirs, I feel even more proud, because we're one of 41 counties in the United States that has that rating. So anyhow, Winchester House is also up for decision, whether or not we need to build a new Winchester House, or what, we have to tear it down, or what. The problem there is that our expenses of benefits and costs and wages far outweigh our income, so we have to do something about that, and that's coming up for a vote very soon, too. So we have lots of things to think about. Also, I wanted to tell you that the Forest Preserve District has some changes. We have purchased a building in Wakanda that was also, I think, also formerly the Motorola Building, and we are establishing our official headquarters of the Forest Preserve District there. In part of that arrangement, we are going to move the Discovery Museum, which is so outstanding, you've probably been there over in Wakanda, into the City of Wakanda and make that a more of an accessible situation. So we have that coming up during the next couple of years, but already, the offices of the Forest Preserve District are moving into the building, and we need that building because everything is just popping out the windows because we have no place for storage and so forth, so we're very proud of that as well. And that's in Wakanda, whereas the new permitting facility is in Libertyville behind Winchester House. One thing more I wanted you to note about is that the Civil War reenactment is coming up again. I tell you about it every year, I don't know if any of you ever get to it, but again, we'll be out at the Discovery Museum grounds as they exist now, in the Forest Preserve District there, the Lakewood, and that is always wonderful. It's very authentic, very well planned, very well rehearsed, and it's always a very hot day, you can count on that. But that will be on the Saturday and Sunday, that weekend after the Fourth of July. Perkins and Wells are going to be the architects to planning renovations to our building that we just purchased, planning how it's going to be reconfigured. So the other thing is, if you go up Green Bay Road at some time, you may pass by the Green Belt Cultural Center. It's just south of Belvedere Road in Waukegan, and it is under reconstruction because we're building in addition to it. It is so popular and so much used by the constituents of our area here that we're going to make a more spacious place of it, and more parking as well, so we're very proud of that. So please try to watch that as you're going north, if you're going north to Waukegan, and get a chance to look at your Horizons magazine. I hope you'll enjoy... I hope you'll enjoy that. I think there's a map, too, I included, of the district and different areas. Hope that's helpful to you. Anything else you have in mind while I hope you'll get in touch with me. And thank you so much for your time this evening, it's nice to be here with you.
Thank you, Susan. We appreciate your coming out this evening, and we're glad that you came out. Instead of 40 below, it's now 100 degrees, so...
I couldn't get here in some of those other bad nights, but I'm glad to be here now.
Thank you for your time.
And that concludes my report for this evening, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is council committee reports, the first being Finance Committee, Alderman Pendleone, who is absent. We'll go on to the Housing Trust, Alderman Morse.
No report, we have a meeting next week.
The next report is Public Works Committee, Alderman Novit.
And just gonna touch on a few items, and actually, I'm gonna read them off, so I'm gonna put glasses on. But we did have a meeting on May 23rd, and we touched on a few issues that I just wanted to bring up. First was, we discussed the possibility of creating an ordinance that would allow the city permission to repair residents' broken B-boxes, which are the water shut-off valves for homes. The ordinance that's being studied would require the resident to have that B-box repaired in connection to their not paying water bills. So it's another mode of enforcement where if the resident isn't paying the water bill, obviously, we'd have the option of turning off the water in response, which would be the one thought. Other item that was discussed at the May 23 meeting was the Bishop's Wood subdivision and the extension of the sanitary storm sewer to potentially service that area. And at least hearing of discussion on various options for that, that'll come up at future meetings. And the last thing that I wanted to mention with Public Works is, is that the annual street overlay program is going to start. Construction will start on replacing and resurfacing roads in the area now that schools are starting on June 15th. So you will see construction work, you will see asphalt put on the roads, and it won't be as extensive as last year in the scope, but hopefully, it'll go very quickly.
Thank you, appreciate that. And you're up again for the Senior Resource Commission.
You're gonna be sick of me on this one. There were a couple of comments that Paul Lemieux, who's the chairman of Senior Resource, he asked me to mention. And one was, he wanted to at least report and note that representatives of Senior Resource recently had the opportunity to meet with the representatives of the Housing Trust and Presbyterian Homes to discuss the use of apparently additional funds that would be delegated to the Neighborhood Homes Program. There's gonna be continued meetings to determine how those funds are gonna be used and funds delegated. The other thing that Paul wanted me to mention, to get out the word on it, is that this Friday, June 10th, the Senior Resource Center at Dickinson Hall will be holding their community health fair. It'll run from 10:00 to 2:00, 10:00 in the morning, not at night, to 2:00 in the afternoon. In that health fair, there's gonna be free health screenings, free hearing tests, raffle prizes. The thing that would get me there would be free food and beverages, as well as information relating to programs that will be offered by the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Senior Resource Center. I believe the weather is supposed to be beautiful on Friday, and for those who haven't seen the campus at Dickinson Hall, it's beautiful. Gardens there are very pretty, and it's an opportunity for the public to get out, see Dickinson Hall, and participate in the programs that are being offered. That's all we have to report. Our next meeting is this coming Monday at 8:00 in the morning.
Thank you, Alderman Novit. Our next item on the agenda is Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, and I'll just make a brief comment. As we continue to look for sources of funds for the West Side pedestrian underpass, apparently, nothing's official, but I understand we may have an opportunity to get some state funds, which is, again, quite an accomplishment. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, and I won't say anything until we know if we've actually received some of those or have more of an opportunity. But it certainly looks better than it looked like just a few weeks ago. So that's a pleasant surprise as well. Our next item on the agenda is comments by council members, any other additional comments? No? The next item would be an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on non-agenda items? Yes, sir? Do you want to come on up?
Bob Pasquazy, 172 North Washington. I'm here to try and get something cleared up that happened to be from the last meeting. I, if you recall, asked for a survey to be done for the housing program, and they showed that on television after it was all over the following week. Cut all of that out. Now I've got all the seniors in town saying to me that I'm against the public housing, the senior housing and stuff like that. I'm not against that housing, I just want to know who it's for. And our question now, and I'm speaking for a lot of the seniors that I've talked to, who wondered about that survey that went out, nobody got the survey. And they're kind of disgusted with the fact that everybody says they got a survey, nobody ever saw it. Now people are looking for that. And I think that they should have that privilege to at least get their voice known.
Alderman Morse, I don't know if you want to make any quick comment to follow up?
Mr. Pasquazy, that survey was done, I think, over six months ago, at least, and it did go out to, I think, approximately 12, we received about 1,200 responses, I'm recalling, somewhere in that range. And what, do you recall? So maybe not everybody got them, but a lot of people.
Well, I have talked to a lot of people that come to me. They know I come to the meetings, and they said, "Did you bring that up?" And I said, "I did bring it up." Well, it wasn't on. It was cut out of the TV show.
Okay. Well, we certainly don't mean to cut your comments out.
But it was cut out, now people think that I'm against the, I'm not against it.
That's good to hear.
Pardon me?
That's good to hear.
Well, I know, but you, I want them to hear. Well, anyhow, that's...
Should I make a comment that Mr. Pasquazy is just going on the record here officially?
I'm not against senior housing, I just want to know who it's for. Now, a lot of the ladies who have senior housing, or could use it, would like to stay in their own homes if they could afford it. Can't the city work something out to keep them in their houses?
Actually, Alderman Novit just referred to a program, it's called Neighborhood Without Walls.
Oh, well, I'll tell you this now, you can't hear back there. The mics, you can't hear in the back of the room.
And that program is something that we're talking about with Presbyterian Homes, which runs Lake Forest Place.
I know all about them.
They have some funds available, and we're looking to see if we can utilize those funds to provide some rent support for people in need.
To stay in their own homes.
Correct. So that's something that we're looking at as well.
Okay.
But that's a good idea that you've had, and other people have had it too.
What are the points? That's why I wanted the survey to go out, but I don't know.
Well, we're not gonna send out another survey, because we already sent one out.
Okay.
But it's great to have your comments tonight.
Yeah, sure.
Any other comments from the public this evening? Yes, Susan?
Thank you, one more, okay, please.
Sure, if you want to come on up, because the public can't hear you in the back.
Thank you. This is something that several people have talked to me about, it isn't just my own thought, but since we've lived here since 1962, one of our pleasures has always been driving along Sheridan Road going south, and just a little bit north of Old Elm Road, if you look to your left, to the east, you get a wonderful view of the lake. And it used to be that the landing strip was there before Sheridan, so it was quite open because, of course, there were landing planes there and using it a great deal. So now it turns out that when you drive along that route, if you turn to look this way, you can't see it, because there are a lot of weeds and brush and so forth. So I immediately assumed that it was something that the Forest Preserve was not taking care of. So I went to our people and asked them about it, and they said, "Well, no, that wasn't their jurisdiction, it was the city of Lake Forest who should be taking care of it." So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I didn't go any farther with it because I was taken off the path, knowing that it was something that you would be deliberating. But if you don't down that way, please look to the east when you get to that point on Fort Sheridan Road, because it's a beautiful view of the lake. And it's really open now, even though the landing strip is gone, except for the shrubbery and weeds and so forth right along the edge of the road. And it's kind of a little hill there, so you can't see up over it too well. And it really is pretty, it really adds to the beauty of the area, I think. So if you would think about that, because as I said, others have mentioned it to me, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
We can certainly look at the weeds issue, but the point you just made about the hill, the change in topography was done by the Forest Preserve as a part of some other work. So I think we'll have to sit down with the Forest Preserve staff and see if we can get them to lower that hill a little, and we'll take care of the weeds.
I'll certainly work on my part, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any other public this evening that'd like to make comment? No? Our next item on the agenda, therefore, is a consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. I might recommend that we look at all of these together if you wish, but I will read them, and then we can go back if you like. One is the approval of authorized invoices and payrolls. Two is the authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of June 2011. Three is approval of amendments from the May 16, 2011 regular city council meeting. And four and five are resolutions of appreciation for Mark Gaddis for 25 years of service at the water plant. And number five is a resolution of appreciation for Zen Deitcha for 20 years of service, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
That was a challenge, that one.
At the water plant as well. And we thank both of those long-term employees for their service and dedication to Lake Forest.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda is ordinances, and the first being a consideration of report and recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and supportive variances from the corner side and rear yard setback requirements at 156 Winston Road. This is a first reading, and if desired by the City Council, final approval. And we have a presenter this evening, our planner, Megan O'Neill. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Robins property is located on the northwest corner of Winston Road and Highview Terrace. It's considered a corner lot with frontage along both streets. It's within the Northwood, I'm sorry, the Northmore neighborhood, which was subdivided in the 1920s and comprised of relatively narrow lots with a mix of housing stock that was developed in the 1950s and before. The existing ranch home has a one-car garage, and the owners are proposing to expand the footprint of the existing garage located here to the north to allow two cars to park. The project also requires the reconfiguration of the adjoining roof area, which is also within the setback area. The proposed construction will not be any closer to the street than the current condition, but a variance is required, given the non-conformity of the existing house. You can see this hatched area here is the buildable area for this lot. And the majority of the home is in fact non-conforming. The Zoning Board of Appeals considered this request on May 23rd and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested variances from the corner side yard along Winston Road to the east, and then rear yard setback requirements to the north to allow the expanded garage, with the condition of approval that the width of the expanded driveway be kept to a minimum that is necessary to access the new garage. I'd like to also point out that standard public notice was mailed out to the neighborhood, and no public comment was heard regarding this request. And the recommended action for the council this evening is to waive the first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance that I believe is on page 25 of your packets, approving the requested variances. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Just a brief question, and for sake of it, and it's been a while since I was on zone, but if the petitioner built a detached garage, the detached garage could actually be closer to the lot line than an attached garage?
That is correct. We do have less restrictive setbacks for accessory structures.
Okay, so actually, by making it attached, we're pulling us further away from the lot line?
That's correct.
And there's been no complaints from any of the neighbors?
None that we have heard.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
Second? Roll call vote, please.
There's a motion for waiving first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct.
There's a motion?
All in favor of the waive first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now, if you want to take the approval, grant final approval? Do we wish to do that?
A motion for final approval.
Second? That is a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda is new business. We have four items, the first being a consideration to enter into a lease agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad relating to the East Lake Forest Train Depot. Lost some words here. Presented by Karina Walters.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. That is correct. The original lease for the Union Pacific building expired in August of 2010. What the city of Lake Forest and the Union Pacific did in the interim is we extended a year-long lease, so that both Lake Forest, as well as the Union Pacific, could agree on a mutually beneficial long-term lease. So this evening, staff is seeking for the city council to approve a 25-year lease in substantial the form that it's in, subject to final review and approval by the city manager and the city attorney. Should you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Karina, and maybe this is Vic, I mean, I know the railroads are just horrible. This is like the worst document I've ever read in my life. We have no rights whatsoever. We pay all the money, we have no rights. They can move the station, they can close it, they can... We don't get paid back.
We've been railroaded.
We've been... Thank you, Alderman Palmer.
He is now three for three.
He has said it so, in one word, he's said what I'm blabbling on about. And I know that we just have to kind of take it or leave it, but...
I would say that...
Can we try and make a little progress?
This lease is substantially similar to what we've had. It does have some improvements, and you'll note that Section 33 does indicate subject to further discussion. And it's probably been that provision more than any that has taken time with this. You'll be unhappy to know that the reference document in that Section 33, as bad as you think that the lease may be for the city, is worse when you look at that document.
Yeah, I was wondering where that went.
But frankly, the railroads have considerable autonomy, both legally and as a corporate matter, over their land, and I think that they understand the value of this lease to the city. One of the things that you will note is that there is some provision that if they do terminate prematurely, that they will be taking on some of the obligations for any grant repayment. And Karina will mention, I presume, in the next, with respect to the next matter, that that is a matter of some concern, because we do have a payback requirement in the Metro grant agreement.
Okay, I just thought I'd go on the record.
We have been for the last year and a half trying to say the same thing.
No, I know.
But if it's of any consolation, this is marginally better than what we have had.
Marginally, yes. I underscored that word. Marginally, yes. Underscore that word. Very good. Excellent job there, counselor.
If we could build from a positive, though, the rent is a dollar per year. We'll build from there.
Well, obviously, the train station is a very important part of our community. And we have a great opportunity here with the grant and everything else to make some improvements and hopefully raise some private funds to help do that. So that part of it is exciting and a positive step forward for downtown.
Would entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Like you'd do it, so you'd have to do it.
Second.
Good. Did you so move? Okay, I was saying?
There was a second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Metro for Phase 1 rehabilitation of the historic East Lake Forest train station. Again, Karina, you're all queued up and ready to go.
Thank you. Just building upon the previous item for the lease approval, I think it's important to provide a little bit of background. The city of Lake Forest originally applied for an ITEP grant in 2005. At that time, we did not, we were not an award recipient. In 2009, we applied for the same grant, because a second round was made available. Unsure of whether or not we would be award recipient because of the first time, the city of Lake Forest was very concerned with the train station, the East Lake Forest train station. The building itself is owned by the Union Pacific. Metro literally is the financial purse string holder of the building, and we just sublease. While we were concerned about the building and identified that the roof was deteriorating greatly, the city allocated money in its capital improvement program of $160,000. At the same time, we did, the city council asked staff to reach out to Metro and ask for about $250,000. So we knew at one point we had approximately $400,000 to handle the roof. In September, the city of Lake Forest did receive notification that we received the ITEP grant, which was the amount of a little over $835,000. So adding that up, we had a total of 1.2 million. The, I think, something else important to add is a year prior, maybe about a year and a half ago, the Historic Preservation Foundation did assist and paid for Harbo Gunney to complete an architectural report to assist with identifying some needs. So knowing that we had a little over 1.2 million, the city of Lake Forest identified critical components for the exterior to be completed. The roof, painting, as well as masonry and potentially some tuck pointing. In May of 2011, the Historic Preservation Commission did approve a certificate of appropriateness, which is really leading us to this evening. So in order for the city to continue to move forward with the ITEP grant and receive the funds, we needed to solidify a long-term lease with the Union Pacific, which we just did. We need to authorize an agreement with Metro for the $250,000. And then after this, then we can commit to a contract with IDOT for Phase 1, or the exterior, which is the roof first priority of the project. So with all of this being said, I know it's pretty cumbersome, and there's numerous moving components to this entire project, but if appropriate, and should the city council desire, authorize the city manager to execute, to enter into an agreement in substantially the form, subject to final review and approval by the city manager and the city attorney for rehabilitation of the Phase 1 East Lake Forest train station. At this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Karina, I have a question. The 1.245 million dollar number, is that a number that's been bid or scoped in some way? How do you, where have you come up with that number?
When we received 835, we received 835, 090 from ITEP. Then we received 160 through the city funds, and then we added in the 250 from Metro, giving us a total of a little over 1.2 million. So knowing that our project was that, we had that much more money, we could draw out the scope of the project a little bit more.
I don't think that's the question. The pricing there really came from Dan Martin and others talking to consultants, roofing consultants and so forth that he sat together. Those are our best guests now, but we didn't have final plans. Gunny Harbo is working with city staff right now to finalize the specifications for the roof. We'll actually be bringing that to you at the July 18 meeting, hopefully for award of contract on the roof portion of it. The painting, woodworking, and tuck pointing will then follow suit, and we'll just do as much as we can with whatever money is left over after the roof gets done.
And those items, Bob, have been competitively bid or will be?
They will be.
Okay.
Yeah, they all will be.
True. Thanks.
Karina, my question would be, if we vote yes, how fast did the work begin? I go to the train station every day. And for those who aren't there, this last winter, when we had some high windstorms, the cedar panels of the roof would be blowing off. The appearance of the station is horrible. The roof's been leaking. There's water freezing on the platform that creates solid bits of ice. And this is right across from Market Square. This is the show, well, it's the center of our city. The renovation of the station is just long overdue, and truly, the efforts that have been put in to get the funding together, it's needed. I can't wait for you guys to get going on it. Hopefully, it'll get going in July. Do you have any idea?
We envision that after the approval this evening, we will submit final documents to Metro. We will also submit documents to IDOT. And as that is sitting through IDOT, which could potentially take about a month, Dan Martin is here this evening. He will plan on going out for bid as of this Thursday for the roof work. We hope that it should begin in August, probably right after Lake Forest Day.
Okay. Not soon enough. Great. Any other questions for Karina? I'd entertain a motion to approve, and I guess the approval is, if we should desire to authorize the city manager to enter to agreement in substantially the form, subject to final review and approval by the city manager and city attorney for Phase 1 rehabilitation of the East Lake Forest train station. And I'm not going to say that again.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration of executing the franchise agreement with North Shore Gas. Our city engineer, Ramish, is going to present, along with Vic Filippini, the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to go back on the East Lake train station, I know Dan Martin is, has worked hard, long on this, and one time he went to a meeting with IDOT. I just got to tell that story. And he was sitting with this bunch of engineers, and they said some acronyms, and all I could see in Dan Martin's face was, "What the hell are these guys talking about?" So, but kudos to Dan Martin. He stuck with it and did all those forms. Those IDOT paperwork grant forms are not easy to decipher, but, you know, he stayed through it and got the grant, as Alderman Novit mentioned. Going back to this franchise agreement, I just wanted to, since we have a few new council members, just wanted to go and explain on what the franchise agreement entails, and then come back to specific to this North Shore Gas. A franchise agreement is typically between a municipality and a private utility. In our case, in Lake Forest, we have ComEd, North Shore Gas, and then Comcast. It's a long-term agreement where the private utilities use the city right-of-way to put their infrastructure, and in return, city gets the franchise. In this case, the franchise gas, and then in electricity, with ComEd, we get the electricity. What it is, is all our buildings, what we call the public-owned buildings, which are for servicing the residents, get a franchise gas. That means we don't have to pay for that gas. In return, North Shore Gas gets to use our right-of-way throughout the city to put their infrastructure. The franchise agreement with North Shore Gas, we had a 25-year agreement, which expired in 1997. At that time, negotiating with North Shore Gas, they realized that even though we have to get a new agreement, they were not so, what I call is like, they were not in a rush to get us a new agreement. In the last 18 months, we've been discussing this with the council on whether to get a new agreement or not. And then we went to legal committee last October, and they recommended that it is good to have a new agreement in place, just in case future ICC decides to make some other changes to their regulations. So it's good to have a, what you call a binding document with the city and the North Shore Gas. One of the changes they made, one of the reasons why city was not so keen on getting a franchise agreement in January of 2010, ICC gave a approval called the franchise cost adjustment. So if you happen to have your two-year-old bills, you can see the bills prior to May 1, 2010, you won't see a line item called franchise cost adjustment. But starting of May 1, 2010, there will be a line item on your bill called franchise cost adjustment. Previous to that, the way the North Shore Gas used to do the franchise agreement for all the municipalities was to get all those costs, they paid to all the municipalities in free gas, and divided among all the customers in Lake County, where they have the jurisdiction. With this changing, they decided that they're going to limit that to municipality only. So if city of Lake Forest uses, let's say, $200,000 worth of free gas, that $200,000 is going to be spread among the city of Lake Forest residents, rather than spreading it throughout the municipality. And that's what they call it, the franchise cost adjustment. Again, we went through this with the legal committee, and the legal committee recommendation was to have a long-term contract. In your packet, there is an ordinance attached with it, a long-term contract. That's a draft copy. Our process begins now to send that agreement to North Shore Gas, and then start the negotiating and see if they are okay with the agreement in place. Few other communities nearby do have long-term franchise agreement, so that's one of the reasons why legal committee was favoring to have this contract in place. If there's any questions, I can answer.
So this isn't really free gas?
Right. That's correct.
As we've been saying all along.
Right. That's what they call it, the franchise.
So the streetlights aren't free?
That's correct. It's only for the buildings. So the water plant, the parks and rec building, golf course, none of them, they all have to pay. Right.
That's a good point. Just...
Years back, when we did the study on the gas lamps, the gas lamps, we have to pay for those?
That's correct.
Yes. The residents pay.
But that's not metered, so that must, they just must calculate the consumption on that, right?
Right. Yes. They're run 24/25.
Too bad we can't get that included.
Well, it's included, but it's paid for by the residents. That's what Ramish just got done, saying the franchise fee will be the usage for public facilities, including gas lights by the city of Lake Forest, divided by the number of residents on the franchise tags.
No, Alderman Morse, the gas light is a separate, they bill a separate for the gas light. It's not part of the franchise agreement.
But it's in the bill.
It's in the bill, right. But we pay for the gas lights, which is a separate total bill, nothing to do with the franchise.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I forgot about that.
The city gets its own built facilities, and a few other buildings.
That's correct.
Residents, if you look on page 77 of the packet, the gas for those facilities are not built to the city. Rather, they are accommodated through that franchise cost adjustment line, the residents build.
Any other questions?
And just for clarification before a motion is made, as this is an ordinance, and this is the traditional way we would handle the franchises, it's really just to approve the ordinance. It won't be effective unless and until North Shore Gas signs it, and at that point, we would have a franchise arrangement with them. If they don't, or if they want to have material changes, it will come back to the council.
Does an agreement come back either way?
It's technically an agreement. We're offering them a right through this ordinance, and they can either accept it or not. If they choose not to accept it or seek other terms, then it will come back to the city. Otherwise, they can just sign off that bid. And I should note, that's usually not the way we approach this. The only reason why we have is that, as Ramish said, we've been waiting, what, nine years, 11 years, something like that, for a response for a franchise proposal.
So they work as quickly as the railroads, I think.
Them, ComEd, and Union Pacific get to battle for who? Who's in first? We have to throw in Comcast, too.
All the three we have agreements with.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is an award of purchase for 65-gallon recycling carts. This will be presented by Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works. And we did have a discussion of this earlier at the committee of the whole meeting. And Michael, if you just want to give us a little synopsis of what we spoke of earlier, and I think you did also ask for us to consider whether we wanted to include the decals for the carts as well. So I assume we'd need to make an amendment to the, any approval this evening as well, if we wish to do that.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is the final phase of our review of the recycling carts. The city's recycling program has been in effect since 1991. We expanded the program in August of 2008, but we are now going to expand it once again to go with the recycling carts. One cart will hold approximately four recycling bins, so we hope that residents will be encouraged to recycle more. We hope our volumes will go up 15 to 20 percent. We therefore went out to bid for the recycling carts. In your packet this evening is our recommendation on the Schaefer cart, which is here. We did receive notice Friday afternoon that the city is receiving a $100,000 grant for the carts. We have 60,000 budgeted in our capital account, so the 160 will pay for the introduction of these carts for half of the town. We'll go at it again next winter, apply for the grant, budget money again in our capital account, and finish up the town next summer. The only item that we, the only additional item is the decal that we're proposing to either put on the outside on top or on the inside. It gives a little more instructions to the residents on where to place the cart, where approximately it should be placed, and again, what items we collect. Committee of the whole meeting, the members, you discussed placing the decal on the inside, which we can do. It'll cost an additional $4,200 than what is noted currently here in the recommendation. So entertain any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Michael? No? Also entertain a motion for approval, including the $4,200 for the decals as well. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
To go on the inside?
On the inside, inside of the lid.
Also move.
I'll second.
This is a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. And again, thank you, Michael, for your diligence and staying with this program and completing and getting the award for the $100,000 from the grant. Again, it's quite an accomplishment to get money out of the state of Illinois, and we appreciate your efforts, and certainly are thankful for those monies in our program.
So we will, we'll be rolling these out this summer. We should take delivery by the end of June, and we'll do a heavy PR campaign for the residents to let them know where to sign up for them.
And Michael, just to clarify, the residents will be able to sign up via the website?
Correct. We'll set it up. We'll work on things this month. And we're going to ask that the residents sign up for a cart via the city's website. Each resident will be allowed to get one free cart. If they want a second one, they can purchase one for $50.
Can we have our PR mavens back there in the room, Ms. Whipple and Ms. Banks? Can we have our PR mavens back there in the room, Ms. Whipple and Ms. Banks, to assist the Public Works Department?
They are ready to go. We'll put the carts wherever.
And Michael, who gets to take that one home with them this evening?
You know, I think we have probably seven or eight of them, so we may...
There's a coincidence.
They would like one, and they can kick things off.
That's right. That's right.
And we can wheel one of them home.
Picture the city council on the inside.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other additional items for council discussion? Move to adjourn? Hearing none. A motion for adjournment? Move to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.